All to order. Public comments on study session related items limited to five minutes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Theron Ferguson. I won't have enough time in five minutes to share all the thoughts that I put together over the course of the last three years, but mainly over the last 24 hours like a student waiting to get ready for the tests the night before. As you're probably well aware, we have quite a bit to discuss and we would still like the opportunity to discuss with you our stance on SafeBilt and how they've operated not only the permitting but rental inspection program in the city of Manistee. I did put together a letter for you guys. I have one for each member. Is it okay if I pass those out? And that will help shine some light kind of the overall of what our concerns are. But these don't even scratch the surface. It was 12 pages narrowed down to six pages, narrowed down to four pages. So then you wouldn't fall asleep reading it. But we have instance after instance numerous situations where, at least from our standpoint, we believe that SafeBilt is really unfit for the job on a whole lot of different levels, whether it's entering units without permission, scheduling, staffing, organizational fees, fines, re-inspect fees, those sorts of things, putting a lot of pressure on an already struggling housing market. If every owner has to put $10,000 or $15,000 into a unit just to make it compliant, what are we really doing for residents who are already having a tough time finding a place to rent? So the list goes on and on. We've got a lot of reasons to consider that we think councils should go in a different direction when SafeBilt's contract is up for renewal. And then as this is a study session, we're also going to be studying how you guys have these conversations. And I did put something together on short-term rentals. I know I probably only have 30 seconds left.
You're still fine. You've got a couple.
But I would just recommend that, so often I've witnessed from 14 years that I've been selling real estate in this community, I've ran for council, I've served on the Board of Review, I've been in here and witnessed, a lot of times we make decisions reactively and not proactively. We don't take the time necessary to really look long-term as to what the effects might be. So I would just ask that we look at the overall economics. I know people are concerned that short-term rentals are taking away from long-term rentals. I think there are two different categories. I think those two markets are moving in the same direction at the same time. They're two separate issues. And I think if you look at economically, the city of Manistee is considered a vacation town. I mean, we're not Silicon Valley, we're not really an industrial town anymore. We're doing a lot of great things. The secret's out about what Manistee has to offer. We're all excited about new opportunity. And I think if we really think this through on short-term rentals and what that brings as far as economics to our downtown, to our parks, to all the businesses that also generate, produce a job for someone to work so that they can buy a house, so that they can pay rent. So if you look at it from that point, I appreciate your time.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
You've got a four-page letter where I assume you've written what the problem with SafeBilt is, and you say we should go in a different direction. Did you suggest what a different direction might be?
In the letter, it actually states other townships and municipalities. If you don't mind, do I have another few seconds?
You have time. You've got two minutes.
So for instance, in Grand Rapids, they ended their contract with SafeBilt in 2019. The city implemented an in-house building inspection system which allowed for more efficient and cost-effective inspections. Lansing ended their contract in 2020. The city partnered with a local building inspection firm which provided more personalized service and better communication between the city and the contractors. Kalamazoo, Flint, Michigan, Muskegon County, all that information is there.
Okay. I want the counsel to read it before we get to it.
Yeah, and it's a lot. Like I said, it was 12 pages in the beginning. There's a lot of information that I left out. I tried to keep it straight to the point. Most of this, for me as a licensed residential builder, has to do with the way that they interpret the Michigan residential code. You've probably gotten complaints about that. We need a permit for vinyl siding. Now we do, now we don't. You don't in the state of Michigan. A lot of things like that. But our real concern is, as a landlord myself and as a property manager for many other landlords out there, it's really putting a burden on our ability to offer rentals for those in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm scared. It seems like I've made it here quite a little. With regard, this is more in term or more to do with the long-term rentals. But several weeks ago, I submitted a Freedom of Information request, and in that I said I wanted a synopsis of the rental inspection program fees and expenses. Well, I got the answer back, they didn't understand what synopsis meant. So I took my Webster dictionary and copied it, and basically the one-word answer, summary. A synopsis is a summary. I submitted that to the city. Today I got back the second request, which I then outlined or specifically wrote down things like number of units, how many were inspected, what the fees were in total, how much does a city collect either in a percentage or into a dollar amount per inspection. And today, like I say, I submitted that second request on the 20th. Today I got back a 500-page-plus document dump. So I had my son come over to try to, he said it's going to take him eight hours at least to download all this stuff out of the computer. But I just want the council to know, it's kind of like, is this the way we do business here? It's almost like a harassment effort on the part of the city to keep us from finding things out and try to make things better. But I'm going to tell you one thing, the city of Troy and SafeBilt learned a lesson just recently when the Supreme Court of Michigan voted against their little, let's just say, kind of their little way to earn some extra money without documenting it properly. So sometimes that 500-page document dump might come back to bite the city. Believe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Karen Goodman, 1925 12th Street, also county commissioner for the 6th District, which is the city of Manistee, especially the downtown. I'm here on behalf of the DDA. I know that you're going to have some discussions on budgets and our submission of our budget, which made a big difference. As you can see, we kind of have two proposals, and one of them does not have the service agreement. I went through all my paperwork because I worked with Mr. Bradford and Mr. McCullough on that service agreement years ago. And I think that, I guess I understand where the DDA were coming from. We want to be able to provide more money for facades and things like that as the DDA, as the downtown kind of builds up. We can see the big difference and we need to put more towards improving and encouraging more businesses in that area. On the other side, I do understand that the DPW does do a lot of work downtown. And I expect or think that we need to have some sort of agreement and understanding of what the roles are. I think there's been, and Mark will talk in more detail about this, about how can the service agreement be enhanced in the sense of maybe a checklist so we know what we need? And then we don't ask for what we shouldn't be asking for. And this sounds a little bit confusing, but what it is, is trying to make a balance. We want to be able to have enough money to be able to support what we're doing in the downtown. And then the second part, we don't want to just believe the DPW should take care of us. I think that it's going to be important that we find a balance in this. It may not be all or nothing. So I just want to kind of offer that suggestion to the council when you talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now we will have a discussion on neighborhood enterprise zones from Tracy Davis.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tracy Davis, and I'm at 251 7th Street in Manistee. I am the Housing Ready Coordinator for Manistee County. And in 2019, there was a study done by Rising Tide that, specifically for Manistee County, that had a number of recommendations, one of which was to create a neighborhood enterprise zone. And this report and recommendations came to City Council and was approved and accepted. And then COVID hit, so everything kind of is at a standstill. Fast forward, and I was hired as the Housing Ready staff member in this area, and the city manager asked me to follow up on the recommendations, specifically to explore the NEZ in Maxwell Town as it was the designated area. So I just want to talk a little bit about what an NEZ is, why we might consider an NEZ, and then if we're interested in pursuing that, what's next. So a neighborhood enterprise zone, or as we refer to it as an NEZ, is a public act that was established in 1992 by Public Act 147. So there has been some recent changes in the last year to that act in regard to attainable housing, but we are not considering that portion of the act. We're doing this NEZ under the obsolete property because we were designated a distressed community. So that's, we're pursuing that portion of the NEZ. An NEZ provides a tax incentive for the development and rehabilitation of residential housing. So a qualified government, City Council for us, can designate one or more areas as an NEZ. So when talking with Bill, we had discussed really working on one NEZ, and if that works, we could come back and discuss further, but really just focusing on and testing one possible NEZ at this point. So why would we want an NEZ? And NEZs have been found to spur the rehabilitation and development of residential housing in areas that normally would not have occurred without this additional incentive, without this zone. It promotes neighborhood revitalization, encourages owner-occupied housing, and a new investment in properties by lowering property taxes. So the residents who receive an NEZ certificate, and they must, there's a process after the zone would be designated, that they would come forward and fill out paperwork for a certificate. If that certificate is approved, they would receive a tax break only on new repairs or new structures at a rate of half of the tax rate for only those new repairs or new structures for 12 years. An NEZ really would help our community with the blight elimination, which I know we talk about at a number of different councils, commissions, and is one of the initiatives that is a priority in our community. So the other thing that an NEZ has been found is it does spur on new housing opportunities. Some of the vacant land or anything that has been demoed would then be eligible for a new housing structure or potentially an AUD if they go through the proper channels and permits to do as they normally would. And one of the things I'm exploring with the NEZ is looking at funding opportunities for this project. So we're not talking about necessarily conventional loans, but there are local banks that have finance products that help with home renovation that aren't normally available. They're available to the general public, but they're not promoted as such.
I've got a question. So would you work with a homeowner that can't, that doesn't go conventional, like the 20% down, they're doing the RD zero down, but the house needs repairs?
Yeah, I mean, I would help walk them through the process of the application and could talk about different resources, which might be a local bank and their different funding programs. It might be a grant, it might be through CDFIs. There's a number of different programs that I'm still in the process of.
But would it help them getting the approval process for that loan? Or do you have to be approved for the loan first?
Before you get the certificate?
Yeah.
No, you don't have to be, you don't have to get the funding before you get the certificate.
Okay.
So once they receive their certificate, they have two years to get their funding, complete any renovations or housing structures. So I could help them apply for their certificate, and I could help them weed their way through and provide some different resources for their funding. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think I confused myself a little bit, though. So they have to purchase the house first, and if it needs repairs?
Well, it could be someone that already has an existing home.
Okay. But if they're trying to get a home, like a RD or FHA where it needs repairs, you can't really help them because they're not really, sometimes the banks won't allow that. So I don't think their programs-
Yeah, they would have to have purchased it already.
Okay, now I understand. Okay.
So it's for current homeowners or landlords, because rentals landlords are eligible for this program. Or if someone wants, has and owns the land, wants to build a structure on it, that's what the program is for. So as I mentioned, this council would designate the enterprise zone, and it does need to be 10 plotted parcels, compact and contiguous, and not exceed 15% of the city's geographic area. So I do have on the board just a draft, and I want you to make sure to know that it's just a draft, of what is red, which could potentially be the enterprise zone. I do think we could probably extend it a little bit down in the corner, the right-hand side, behind Family Fair, to go through Vine, that area as well. So this proposed area, Maxwell Town and adjacent, is, without that additional Vine area, is about 192 acres. So we're well within our 15% maximum. And if we chose to even add that additional, that would be just a tiny bit of additional property. So if we wanted at a later date, and this was something that was of interest, we could add enterprise zones at different locations. So this area in particular is one that the police have cited for blight on numerous occasions, so that would help people in this area. So let me see. I mentioned that landlords can qualify. So in your packet, there was a whole huge, numerous, tiny little print of frequently asked questions, which I just wanted to give you some additional information. And then there also was the link to the state's NEZ site. Some of the other things, if you're interested in moving forward and pursuing an NEZ, some of the things we would need to do are go to the Planning Commission and see if this fits in the master plan. We need to do some administrative things with city assessors. We also would update that map if you think that adding that section into behind Family Fair, and I keep looking over there at the map behind Councilman Aaron's head. And then we would have to, it's a very lengthy process, about four to five months, there has to be public hearings and things of that nature. But this was really just to kind of talk about first steps, see if we're interested in moving the process forward, and if I can answer questions that you might have or get back to you with answers if I don't have them right off.
Does it matter, most of this is in my district, but some of it is in, I think it's part of your district, too.
Yes.
Does it matter that it's in two districts?
No, it does not. It just has to be contiguous, compact area that isn't broken. So we couldn't jump to, for example, from here over to Washington Street. That would have to be a separate zone at a separate time if that was interested.
What would people say were the negatives of this? Who does it impact negatively?
I think the only thing would be possibly the discussion about the tax break for individuals, but it only is on the repairs and the new structures at four-half of the rate.
Specifically owner-occupied homes?
Yes.
Not rentals, not seat-
No, it could be rentals. So the-
By definition, how's that owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied, it encourages that because a lot of the homes in this area are already occupied. There is the combination, yes, there are rentals in that area, but it just encourages owner-occupied.
Doesn't require it?
No, it does not.
If your first had a rental down there and wanted to invest, he would be eligible for the-
Yes, yeah.
So I have a question. You mentioned that this could potentially help with blight, which I think we all recognize as a problem. I guess I'm wondering, though, is there some type of an agreement or understanding? If somebody was to apply for this and be awarded, what would prevent them from not just taking that tax break and not reinvesting that into the home? Is there systems of checks and balances to make sure that this stuff gets done?
Yeah, there is. So they have to have gone, and then after getting their certificate, they have to have permits and have, in the application for their certificate, there has to be an explanation of what has occurred. They have that two-year time limit, and if, within that two years, that it hasn't, anything has occurred, that certificate is revoked, and then the taxes are assessed again at that regular rate. But if there's not anything done, the tax rate stays where it was regardless.
Okay. If they fix up the property and then turn around and sell it, is that certificate revoked?
It is not revoked. It can transfer to ownership. The 12 years doesn't start over. And I'd have to go back through the frequently asked questions to see if there are any other stipulations.
Okay.
But it does, it can transfer with the purchasing.
It could transfer, so if someone fixed the property, received the break, and sold that property, the new owner may be able to continue to get that tax break for the number of years left.
For the remaining years.
Could be an incentive.
And I can double-check that to make sure, but I do know that it is transferable when I originally went through the information.
Do you have data on, like, where this has been done and successfully transformed a neighborhood?
So Muskegon is a great example where it's been done. A lot of the metro Detroit area, it's been done. The Flint area, it's been done successfully. There hasn't been really many places in the rest of northern Michigan. It is a discussion on the table for many at this point. But Traverse City, or, excuse me, Muskegon probably is the closest area that it's been done successfully.
You mentioned that the City Council voted on this before COVID. What did council vote on?
You voted on the recommendations with the Rising Tide Plan. They had a list of recommendations.
You would need more direction from this council to move forward then.
Yeah, yeah.
What did you vote on?
I mean, this is, it was one of the, there was a packet, let me see, I might even have it, of recommendations. It's multi-multi-pages, and this was just one of the recommendations to move forward. So the city doesn't necessarily have the capacity to do all those things, and I'm here to help with that.
What is the next step to start this process?
So the next step really would be discussing what you really want as the zone, the specific boundaries. And do you see that on your screen? Oh, okay. So if I need to make an adjustment to that, taking it to Planning Commission to see if it fits with the master plan, which discussing with the planners, I mean, that shouldn't be a problem. And then having a public hearing would be part of the next steps. There also does need to be, as I mentioned, some, I'll be discussing with economic committee to see if this fits in with their plans as well. But those things shouldn't necessarily be an issue before we have public comment. And that's long before you even would vote to have a resolution. So there's a lot of times and steps in between that process of the resolution.
So with this program, is the 12 years adjustable? Like, could we, as a council, say we don't want to start with 12? Could we go with a lower amount? Or is 12 like the standard amount that's got to be-
So I actually, before coming here, that was one of the questions I had, because in some places it said up to 12, and then in other places it said 12. So there's a different year structure if it's in a downtown area, which this is obviously not. So I can make some phone calls and find that out for sure, if it could be shorter than that 12.
Yeah, I guess I personally would be interested in seeing that. I just feel, I know there's been a lot of things, and that's great that there's resources out there, but it seems like 12's been that magic number lately. And 12 years from now, we might be looking at a very different picture. So I just, I kind of wonder if 12 might not be the best starting place. It might be, but I just wonder.
I did, for some reason, I thought I had read that there was a window of between 7 to 12, but I could not find that today when I was doing that additional research. It just kept saying 12 or up to 12.
Yeah, I think the 12 is a little excessive. The, so the timeframe, four to five months, and to do all the public hearings and stuff, and then once you get this kind of grid down pat, how long does it take from the time that they do their applications for the work? Is there like a timeframe to, like, the work has to be completed?
Well, so, it's sort of two separate processes, that we have the NEZ, and we go through that process and establish that, send it off to the state with all the resolutions that are required. There is an additional ordinance if the property is sold for inspections, that, I did talk to the planning, the planners, they thought that what we had would suffice. I want them to confirm that again. But all those things have to occur. The state has to say yes, everything's in place. Then we would have the process have, in between there, developed on how people apply. There is an application that, sort of a standard that we could get started. And from the time that we are allowed to begin accepting applications, that's when the two years for them starts. They have to have that completed, their project completed, within two years. And it probably for them would take about maybe two, three months to get through the process of the applications, because I do need to come back and say, okay, these are the people, these are the areas that have applied, to notify again with public hearing.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a discussion on short-term rentals, Mr. Pratt.
So I provided each council member with a packet, and then I gave one to Heather in regards to the information that I had researched. I looked at five communities, Traverse City, Muskegon, Grand Haven, Luddington, and Frankfort, and each of them have ordinances or policies and procedures in regards to short-term rentals. And I just feel like when I look at the city of Manistee, that's definitely an area we're lacking. And, um, I just feel like when I look at the city of Manistee, that's definitely an area we're lacking in. Um, and looking at the research, you know, in 2016, we had 31. In 2019, there were 185. I don't have current numbers. I reached out, but I didn't get those. But today I looked on Airbnb and there's 122 listed and not everybody goes through Airbnb. And I guess I just wonder, what are we going to do? Um, and this, I, I think I agree 100% with what Theron mentioned earlier. This isn't something I'm saying tonight, let's take action on this, or tonight, let's adopt an ordinance on this. I think this is something we have to be strategic about. We really have to plan. And we really have to say, what is it we want? Because I'm not against short-term rentals. I think there's positives and negatives. But we don't distinguish in the city of Manistee, what's a short-term rental versus what's a long-term rental. And, and that's an area of concern. You know, somebody who's running a short-term rental or a rental that is close by or they've connected with, um, Essential Real Estate or Century 21 and they have somebody managing that property looks very different than somebody who owns a property and they live three states away. And they don't really have somebody who's managing that property. So when there's an issue, there's really nobody to deal with it. And they're kind of looking at that. I also have concerns with the fact that there are a lot of people that own short-term rentals and long-term rentals that are going through the system of having it inspected. They're paying their taxes. They're upkeeping those properties. We have other people on the flip side that are running short-term rentals. Um, I've brought one up for the past two years that the gentleman lives multiple states away and he's not paying those 18 mils. It's not claimed as a rental. He's never lived there. It's never been owner occupied. He doesn't stay there at all. That's a concern because we're losing tax money on that. That could be going back into infrastructure and resources within this community. And I think as a community and as a council, um, you know, this last election season, we, housing was a hot topic. It came up at many different levels. And I think we have to look at what are we doing to accommodate both sides of that coin? Because as short-term rentals have been able to drive the market, so to speak, if you can rent your house for a week and get what you were getting for a month, that's increased the rent on the other side. So we have some people that can't obtain housing at all. I think there's a need for rentals. I'm not saying let's limit the rentals because there's people that say they don't ever want to own a property. You know, they would rather pay rent and have somebody else manage that. So I, I think there's a need for rentals, but when you look around and each community does something different, like Luddington only allows 30 applicants. They charge $1,500 an application, or $500 for the application, $1,500 a year for the license. If you pass away, it is not passed on. Um, you can't have more than two short-term rentals on a block. Uh, you have to have somebody in charge of that. I'm not saying we want to go that route, but Traverse City says you can't have more than 25% of your properties be short-term rentals. Muskegon has an application process. Luddington talks about, um, affordable housing and why they're limiting their short-term rentals. Frankfurt had this really nice guide for short-term rentals that talks about noise disturbances, parking, garbage, recycling. It's a one-page flyer. That would be really nice to hand out to people that are operating those, to, things to consider. They have to have a 24-hour, uh, contact name and that person has to be able to be on the premises when, within an hour. I, I don't think starting here and enforcing some of the things we already have, like expecting people to pay the taxes that are due on those rental properties. I don't think anybody is going to argue with that. But when we have a system that's not being enforced or it's not, um, consistent, that creates a problem. And if, if that's the system we're going to go with, then I would almost say maybe we need to look at, is there a tax incentive for people that are offering long-term rentals? I mean, that's providing, um, a more consistent housing for potential residents that are working here versus somebody who's operating a short-term rental. I can tell you, I had one person ask me about short-term rentals and he said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna apply for it with the city. I'm not gonna have it inspected and I'm not gonna, um, report it as a rental until I get caught. And that's not the way most of us would do business, but unfortunately that is the way some people do business. So I, I have to ask, what are we doing to make sure we're getting the tax revenue? And to look out for the residents? I mean, some people probably operate very good short-term rentals. I've seen it done. I, I've seen people that have no issues with short-term rentals in their neighborhood and their community and they rant and rave about it. But if you have a, somebody who's not there or somebody who's not playing by the rules, it leads to the potential for it to be a disaster. And I don't think that's fair to people that have purchased a home in that neighborhood and they've made a long-term investment. So I, I think it's worth having a discussion to say, what do we see being feasible to put in place?
I, I, or, or Donna?
Yeah.
I have a couple of comments. I think the flyer that Frankfurt has is a good idea to put in rentals. I think that all of the short-term rentals should be inspected and have a certificate. I don't think that we should gouge them on prices. And then I also, I mean, obviously looking out for the residents, it needs to be both sides. Like, we need to clean up the long-term rentals that we have and have all of the short-term rentals have a certificate and inspect it. And if they're, I agree with you, if they're states away, they need to have somebody like, Boardwalk Vacation Rentals or Essential, somebody like that, uh, managing them. And I don't know, are, can we have the ordinance committee like look into it, like?
Yes, I think that would, that would be a good next step for it. Maybe have a group look into this and bring back a recommendation to council.
Okay.
Didn't we do that a while back?
Yeah.
So say there's.
Did that.
Done that, I mean, two years ago.
So I know this has been going on, I think, a couple of years now. And I did see 2021, it looks like there was a draft ordinance, but didn't get acted on. Then we discussed it again last year.
I think it's because they had the, the $500 fees and the $1,500 and then that we wanted to pay like $10,000 for somebody to find all the rentals, which was a ridiculous waste of money, I think.
So they presented it to us and then we kind of gave like what we didn't like and just, and liked. And then they were supposed to come back with a revised and we never got that back. And we.
I think we'd probably start fresh with a new, the whole time I've been here, there hasn't been an ordinance committee on this. But do you remember who was on it? Who said?
I don't. And I think, I think we left it the same. So I think it's Kerbowski. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I don't know off the top of my head who's on that.
Okay. So maybe we'll have them reconvene. They can look at what was done and then.
Is there a way, I mean, this might be a stupid idea, but we do some kind of like ad hoc committee for, um, short-term rentals because it's so, there's so many different opinions on this. And then have something, because I know we had like a street ad hoc committee, but I think there's so many different opinions and maybe have someone in each district because it's different for you live on the north side to Maxwell. When there's not a lot in my area versus in Beaton's area. So I think we need to get a lot of people's opinions and see.
Also even figuring out, because sometimes they do register them, sometimes they don't. Even when they buy the, or you, you know, you sell them a house, you don't know what they're going to do with it. They don't necessarily say they're going to do that. And I think even figuring out who's doing it in our town is going to be not necessarily an easy thing.
Because I have a hard time saying what you're allowed to do when you own your own house. Like, you bought that house, I think you have a right to do what you want to do, but.
And we did, I think, um, Councilmember Pratt brought up how it's been increasing. Sammy Lukachewa's shared, I think she had some data that's 153 now. But you're right, just kind of knowing where it's at is kind of half, half the battle.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Erin. I, I'm all for people, if you want to invest in a property, I, I mean, as long as you're following the ordinances, the rules, zoning, those type of things. I, I'm not saying that, but I guess I'm saying I've never purchased a property and thought, wow, I'm not going to register this as a rental, but I'm going to rent it out weekly. If you're making income off of that, you should be willing to pay those taxes. You know, it's different, you know, I mean, we have things in place for people that are poverty exempt and those type of things. But it's a little different when you're making income and you're advertising it out there on social media or different platforms and you're saying, I'm not going to register it that way. And then it's a safety concern, right? I mean, one of these, um, I think it was Frankfurt and maybe Luddington. I mean, you do have to have it inspected to, to the point that you have to have a fire extinguisher. And, and I think that's good. I mean, but the other part is we've seen a lot of, um, business in the form of hotels and things like that. This is competition for that. And I think, you know, I think we have to decide, how, how are we going to promote both? Because if you can rent a house, I mean, some of these houses are $95 a night. Well, that's a lot cheaper than probably a hotel room and a lot more space. So I, I think we have to come up with a system that's going to support the community's needs, property owners, and how are we going to support these businesses too? Because there's a lot of competition it seems and not a lot of accountability.
Homes, they were going to put just so many in each district too. That was a problem.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some areas that are really dense with short-term rentals and some areas that aren't. And I don't know how to fix that now. I mean, I don't know if we, I mean, they're already there.
I think you can just move forward.
Yeah, yes.
The accountability piece of like maybe tracking down what you have, I think you can work on a little bit. But I think what can we do moving forward?
And what do we want to, what does the city want to? I totally agree with that conversation.
So I think I'll have a conversation with George about, you know, we have this ordinance committee that's supposed to bring it back in a forum and discuss it. But we could maybe, I don't know if it's, we have some more members invited to certain meetings with the ordinance committee or if we have an ad hoc.
Only three people on the ordinance committee.
Yeah.
So I, I really, I gravitate more toward having an ad hoc committee because I think that's much more productive in the long. It'll take a longer process, but you'll get a lot of stuff out on the table and hash out. So I would be more in favor of that.
I kind of like that because I think you're going to get different views. Like, um, Century 21 and Essential Real Estate and some of those businesses that do this, they're going to have a different perspective than we do because they see different sides of that. So I think it'd be valuable to get their input.
But I would, I mean, I don't want it to have just all real estate, but more like.
Community members.
Reverse people too.
Yeah.
And they are making good money. We found, I found one just looking at the, one that's $350 a night right now and then I think in June it jumps to 400 and something a night. And it's not on the water. They, they can afford, a lot of them can afford it.
Thank you. I'll, I'll look into the ad hoc committee and the ordinance committee and I'll report back.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks Seth for doing all that work.
Okay, now we will have a discussion on SafeBuild Rental, Rental Inspection Program. Glenn Lindsay.
So I have my coworker here, Kelly Lindsay as well. Thank you. Kelly Lindsay is your account manager. And I am the Midwest Director of Operations for SafeBuild.
Thank you.
So we're here actually for a couple of reasons. Uh, and we talked to Bill about this. We knew that we were being asked to come and speak regarding the rental program. But what I just handed you has more to do with the building side. So we'll handle them separate issues. As you can see, I provided you with a profitability sheet. This is straight from our profit and loss statement at SafeBuild. And in the year 2022, uh, SafeBuild generated 202,446 dollars off of permits, which include building permits, electrical, plumbing and mechanical permits and, and also plan reviews for structures. We're under contract to provide all those services. So we generated 202,446 dollars. Of that, 42,750 is rental income. And that'll be important for the second part of our discussion. So 159,696 was what we generated for the Building Department Services revenue. And that is 80% of the revenue for permits. So if a permit comes in, that's a hundred dollars. We keep 80, the city keeps 20. Just so, so everybody understands, there's an 80-20 split currently. So the cost of our sales to provide the service for all of those services was 181,840.62 cents. As you can see, it's a 10.2% margin, which is none, it's not sustainable for a private, private business. Uh, and I gave, as you see farther down on the sheet, I gave you each of the employees that has worked in the city. This is the hours that they've logged to the city of Manistee for 2022. Uh, there's a mechanical inspector, a plumbing inspector, a building and rental. There actually are two building and rentals. Kevin Crevel, who was hired part, you know, the later half of the 2022 season, and prior to that it was Kirk Briggs. So there, that's why you see two of them listed. Normally it's just one inspector that services the city. And then there's some fire protection review for the large projects that require fire alarm, sprinkler systems, or if it's a restaurant, a hood review. Uh, so we had some, some hours there. And then there's a couple of backup inspectors that you can see at very low hours. They, they didn't visit the city very often. And then there's a permit tech which handles all of the admin part. So all of the permit applications that come in that have to be entered into the system, all of the prerequisite work to, before we can issue the building permit. They, that, that admin person takes care of all that. They schedule all the inspections. On the rental side, they do all of the notices that have to go out. So there's one permit tech there and those are the hours for the permit tech to handle the city of Manistee. So as you can see, this is not sustainable for us long-term. And so I had to dig in, I'm charged as a Midwest Director to dig in and find out what's causing such a low profitability margin. And what I found is, the next page of your packet, you'll see that is the current valuation table for figuring cost of permits. And it's a table with a whole bunch of numbers on it. You should see one number highlighted down towards the bottom right-hand side. And I just picked one category. I picked R3, which is residential one and two-family homes and 5B construction, which is all wood construction. So it's your typical home or addition to a home. That's the youth group and construction type. You can see it's $95.34. That's the, the multiplier that we use when we're trying to calculate the cost of that home. So you, you've probably heard in the past, it costs around a hundred dollars a square foot to build a new home. So you may have heard that. That's the current fees that we're charging, that's highlighted on there, $95.34. I shouldn't say the fees that we're charging, but that's the multiplier we use to calculate the value of the work being done. The next page you have is a report and has a green heading on it. It's a two-page report. That's from the International Code Council, ICC. They're the ones that develop all of the codes. They have, they're the model codes for internationally for all the different states. Michigan takes the ICC code and then they make some changes to it that are specific to Michigan. So we're currently under the Michigan Residential Code and the Michigan Building Code, but it's all modeled under the ICC. So just to give you a background of who ICC is. If you look at the second page of their, the second page of that stapled together pack, you'll see that same highlighted number down in the bottom right corner. And this is from 2021. The cost of construction was $130.58. That's the value of what it would cost somebody per square foot. The next page jumps us all the way forward to February of 2023. The current cost of construction to build a new home is running at about $167 per square foot. And that's a very conservative cost. It's not a high-end home. That's a basic, uh, basic home with, with not high, without high-end amenities. So you can see where we're at now, $95.34 for our current fees. 2021, the value was, or the cost was $130 a square foot. Now it's up to 167. And everybody knows that lumber prices are a lot higher. It's, it's harder to get contractors. They're charging more for their time because they're, they're, they're very valuable. So what we've discovered is, we didn't keep up with the times when we were calculating our building permit fees. We're still basing the building permit fees on a $95 multiplier. The cost of construction is now $167 a square foot. You have a, you have a licensed builder here. I heard him talking. He could probably verify that the cost has gone up astronomical. It's, it's crazy. Sorry. What's that? Go ahead. It's, and it's probably even higher than that. This is just a kind of a base model. Like I said, it's not for a high-end home on the lakefront. So that's one of the problems that we have, is we haven't adjusted our pricing or our valuation cost for permits. So when you were. So when you were with the state of Michigan, you had, they charged the same fees as the very first table you looked at, the ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents, that's their fee schedule. SafeBuild just took their fee schedule and adopted it as our own. So those are the fees that your contractors were paying prior to SafeBuild coming in here. The state kept one hundred percent of all that revenue. So if they got a permit in for a hundred dollars, they kept the hundred dollars. They didn't share it with the city at all. So what we're proposing, we have a few different options. We're proposing, in order for us to make that portion of the contract with the city profitable for SafeBuild, we need to either switch to a hundred percent of the fees that we bring in, or there's an option of you keep ten percent of the fees and go up to the valuation from the 2021 report that you have, or you keep twenty percent of the fees and go up to the 2023 valuation. So we have three different options in order to, to make this successful for both parties. Does anybody have any questions on any of that? I know it's a lot of information, a lot of numbers.
What are we currently using, so that twenty percent fee that we have, what are we using that for?
Um, so yeah, it's an eighty-twenty split and it goes towards administration. And I think some of it goes to the manager's office and, and then rental is a straight pass-through. So any fees we get in, it goes directly to SafeBuild.
So the twenty percent that you retain is forty thousand dollars, just for round figures. So in order for us to be profitable, we would need a hundred percent of those fees or that additional forty thousand to be retained by SafeBuild, or the other two options we talked about. Our contract is, is up for renewal, I think in May. So we're going to be proposing an amendment to the contract with a change in the revenue share. And we'll provide those three options in writing, so you can take a look at it and, and determine what would be the best course of action to take. Now, the second piece of this is the rental portion. And again, I, I shared with you that of the two hundred and two thousand, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of that was income generated by the rental department, which is inspection fees and some registration fees. That's where that came from. And I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to talk to you about the current state of the rental.
Okay, thank you. So we, we've calculated that we have nine hundred and seventy-six rental units within the city. And they are on a three-year inspection cycle. So we've broken those out to complete a certain amount per year. So in 2021, it was three hundred and twenty-six that were due. In 2022, it was three hundred and fifty-one that were due. And on track for 2023, we have two hundred and ninety-nine that are due. At this, after Q1, so we're into Q2, we're at forty-six percent of achieving the two ninety-nine. We've inspected one hundred and thirty-eight units so far. And in, in calculating what it cost us last year versus what the income was for the rental program, we brought in forty-two thousand, as Glenn mentioned, a little over forty-two, and it cost us fifty-five thousand to enforce it. So we, we are, obviously, we can't sustain that.
But you kind of knew that, like, when we entered into this contract, like, how many rentals we had and how far we were behind, right?
We did know the number of rentals, yes. What we didn't anticipate was the amount of administrative time that this program takes to administer. So out of the fifty-five thousand, thirty thousand dollars of that is the admin time that we paid our permit tech to process letters, schedule inspections, send enforcement notices. It's a tremendous amount of administrative work. We didn't anticipate that. But we did know the number of inspections. Because we were able to calculate about what kind of revenue that would generate for the inspections. Because you charge ninety dollars per inspection and it's once every three years. So we knew that if we did about three hundred a year, that would generate about twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. We did not know the amount of labor that it was going to take for the administrative part. I have a feeling, when Spicer turned this over to SafeBuild or gave it back to the city, I have a feeling, I now know why they did that. Again, it's a very, very labor-intensive and your fees are not high enough to cover your costs. Regardless of who does it. If, if some other contractor came in here to do this rental department, they're going to generate the same amount of fees because it's based on your fee schedule. It's going to cost them more money to administer the program than what they bring in. So what I can tell you is, we administer several successful rental programs. City of Muskegon is one. I talked to the City of Muskegon building official today and I asked him, what are your charges? What do you charge your rental property owners? He said, we charge them a hundred dollars every single year. And they have an inspection every three years or six years, depending on if they're a, a good property owner, if they don't have many violations. So in the same three-year period, they're generating three hundred dollars. Your three-year period generates ninety dollars. So your, your fees, because you don't charge a registration fee. You do a registration fee one time and that's valid for the life of the, or the, as long as that property owner owns the property. There's not another registration fee until it changes ownership.
And I wanted to speak on the registration fee. And if you go to a short-term rental program, this is relevant to that, too. We have several communities that we enforce the rental program. And they charge a very low annual fee for registration. And that's just so that you all know what, what rentals, every twelve months, what's in your community, what are the rentals? Plus, you're keeping a database of who owns the property and how do I get ahold of them? Phone numbers change, emails change, addresses change. And that's always been the function of the registration piece. And when we first came in, we suggested that. But because there was already a registration in place for, and it was forever. So you registered once and then it was forever. So there were several already, you know, into that cycle. And so I, I don't think that it was something that was heard because of that. But times have changed and, and it's, it's good to keep your fingers on who's renting what and, and who the current owner is. Just, and, and we don't collect that. That is something that the city retains and the city manages of the communities that we are providing rental inspection services.
The City of Threeers is a good example of that. They charge a twenty-five dollar registration every single year. They have a hundred dollar inspection fee every two years. And the city collects that twenty-five and retains it. And then they pay us a flat-rate monthly amount to administer all of the letters and the admin part, the scheduling of the inspections and everything. That registration fee offsets their cost for that flat-rate monthly amount.
And they have twelve hundred rentals.
So as far as the rental program, it cost us thirteen thousand dollars more than we brought in to administer the program. I would personally like to just say, we're going to give this back to the city because we can't do it. We can't lose money. We can't, you know, pay you to go to work for you. My boss won't allow that. My boss says, we have to go to you and propose some type of improvement. A contract improvement plan is what they call it. So we have to make an effort to continue to provide the services for you. So what we've come up with in order to, to make it sustainable for us and to be able to operate at a profit, not even our target profit, this is what we've come up with.
Are you saying that you don't really want to do it, but your boss said you have to do it?
No.
Oh, no.
He didn't, no.
I mean, because that's the case, you've been having a contract, right?
No, and I knew it came out like that, and that's not what, what we mean at all.
If we can't improve the contract.
Get that, but I just want to hear the subtext of what you just said. I wanted to make sure I understood or didn't understand.
Yeah, we would love to continue to provide the services for you, but
And, and also, we don't want to come to you with an improvement plan that's something that is not sustainable for you and for what you have and your goals. So we will suggest that a monthly administrative fee to enforce the program.
So that monthly administrative fee that we would have to bill the city is twenty-two hundred dollars a month to cover the administrative costs of providing the continued service. And the city would then have to come up with a way to generate the revenue so it doesn't cost all of your taxpayers that money. You don't want to pay that out of general fund because it's not fair to the rest of your taxpayers.
Which is also why I mentioned the registration, the annual registration is, it would serve to two or three purposes there.
Can I ask a data question? What does a rental unit certificate issued mean? What does that mean?
After it's been inspected and deemed to comply with the Rental Housing Code, a certificate is then granted.
So how does that vary from inspections complete?
So, so if I'm complete and you got forty, you got forty-three certificates issued, correct? On this sheet? So that means forty-three houses or inspections are done, right?
So a hundred and sixty-one, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-eight inspections were completed. And out of the hundred and thirty-eight, forty-three have been deemed to be in compliance and had a certificate issued.
But you, but you show forty-six percent of your number completed of the two hundred and ninety-nine complete. Wouldn't that number be a little higher than forty-three if you had forty-six percent of two ninety-nine?
So forty-six percent is just the number of inspections due this year versus how many inspections we've done so far. So the certificates are only a fraction of the ones we've done. It's not a, it's not a percentage of the total units due this year.
And the other ones are likely in need of additional inspections or maybe we had to wait for snow cover to be gone. You can't necessarily fully inspect rentals with snow covering on the roof or other elements, ice. What, I mean, it, it has to be, we have to be able to clearly not just go inside and, and inspect, but also the outside, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question because I may have missed this? So, okay, a hundred and thirty-eight rentals have been completed.
Yes.
But only forty-three of those hundred and thirty-eight were issued.
Have passed, correct.
So what is the, I guess, what is the feedback that you guys are getting that they're not passing? Like, that's concerning to me, that if we have a hundred and thirty-eight and only forty-three are passing, what's the obstacle there?
There are corrections that are needing to be made.
Like, so do we keep, do you guys keep track of that?
We do. We have a software program that tracks all of that.
So is there a way that data could be shared with us? Like, what are, I guess I'm wondering, like, what are the three main things that seem to be obstacles for people?
Sure. And actually, our software, anyone on the council can get access directly into our software as a read-only basis. So you can see all of our permitting activity, you can see all of our inspection activity. You can see everything for the City of Manistee. So if anyone on the council want, would like that access, we can certainly get that access for you.
What happened to the ones that didn't get certified in 2021 and 2022? Does that number move advance or they?
It does. So you'll see, in 2022, there was a hundred and fifteen percent completed for the year. It's because there was a carryover from COVID in 2021.
Okay.
So if a rental doesn't pass inspection, can they still operate it as a rental?
Technically, no.
Do we allow that in the city?
So when it's reported, it'll have to go to court, let's through George. So I, I mean, that's something that would have to escalate.
So I'm going to assume that most of those are still operating as rentals?
I'd have to confirm some of those.
That would be correct.
So when you come back then to re-inspect again, do you, what fee do you charge them then?
Uh, the re-inspection fee, I think, is seventy dollars.
It's a hundred.
Is it a hundred? Okay. So it's different in all communities, so.
I, I have some concerns with the, with the fees, just because I, I see both sides of it. Like, I see sometimes we have landlords that have, you know, rundown properties and they don't want to fix it up. And sometimes we have landlords that do, that have purchased properties, they keep them up, they're, you know, they're in pristine shape. And then some, when you do the rental inspection, like, if you're short a smoke detector, well, then you got to pay another hundred bucks for them to come back and look at that smoke detector. Or when they come back to make sure that you put the smoke detector in, they find another issue. And then you've got another issue, and then you've got another re-inspect fee. I think that's, that's a little excessive.
That's a problem. If that's occurring, that's a problem.
I also see it as a problem when, just take for instance, I know of a landlord that had to replace the carpet in a home that the renters tore up. He had like forty-five, sixty days to have Home Depot come in and put new carpet. In that timeframe, it was only like maybe three weeks from the time the carpet got put in to the time they came back out and re-inspected it, the renters had it tore up again. So I don't think that rent, landlords should have to pay for that if that's the way the renters want to live. If you're deeming that a safety hazard, if that's the way they want to live and they want to destroy the carpet, why should this landlord constantly keep having to put in new carpet, pay the re-inspect fee? Now it's trashed again, so I just, I think some of the fees, the re-inspect fees on these little tiny things are, are ridiculous. I mean, especially if it's a pristine house, you're missing a smoke detector. Okay, well, now you're going to gouge them a hundred bucks. And then some of them that have five units, I mean, I think it should be a certificate for the whole building, not a hundred thirty dollars here, a hundred thirty dollars here, a hundred thirty dollars here, a hundred dollar re-inspect here, two hundred here, like, for the different units. I think it should be a unit as a whole, because you're counting that house as a unit as a whole. So I just, I am not in favor of raising the, the fees for it at all because I think it's a little nitpicky on behalf of the inspectors. And I don't know if it's the inspectors personally, because we've been through four or five of them now with this company, or if it's the company's policy as to if you don't have this, it's getting checked. Because I know that we've got the checklist and the checklist seems kind of extreme, but then it's like, well, we don't follow that to the T. We kind of, you know, disregard some of them if it's not a safety issue. But I just, I think some of them are a little excessive.
Sure, and I can, I'll be completely transparent with you. We did have a problem with one of our inspectors. He's not, he's no longer here, his name is Stephen Houghan. We did have a problem with him. It seemed like he was charging re-inspection fees for stuff that, and I personally had a conversation with him. I said, Steve, if you go in and they're just missing a smoke detector in the bedroom, you can, you can just ask them to send you a picture of that correction. We don't need to go back to that site and charge them a fee. They can text you a picture of the smoke detector located on the ceiling and call it, call it good. So it's, I have a, I have a hard time with some of the inspectors that don't use common sense and it seems like they're just out to nickel and dime the landlords. I have a problem with that. If that is happening, I, if it's brought to my attention, I will jump in and address it. Because I don't, that's, we're not about that. We're not about trying to see how many re-inspection fees we should get. And if it's happening, then I will address it personally. I don't, I don't like that. It's, there are other inspectors out there, other agencies and companies that are known for that. I don't want to be known for that. And if we are being known for that, I will take care of it personally. I will handle it. I've had, actually, had a conversation with Kevin and I had a clear understanding with Kevin. If you're going to, if you go out to a five unit and you have two units that need corrections and you have to go back to see them because there are safety violations that you really need to go back to the site, for example, a GFCI in a kitchen or a bathroom, you have to actually go test that to make sure that it's hooked up correctly. If you have two re-inspections, you can do that under one fee. You don't need to charge a fee for both of them.
As long as it's ready.
That's just getting greedy, as long as both corrections are made.
Yeah, and I, I think that if you're going out to re-inspect, you shouldn't be allowed to.
To find new violations.
Because when appraisers appraise houses, like, they can't go back out and say, oh, I missed that, I missed that, and add on, and add on more stuff, so.
I agree with you completely. We do not, we should not be citing anything on a re-inspection that wasn't seen in the first. And if you do see it and it's a safety violation, you bring it to their attention, you tell them to fix it, we're going back for free to look at that because we missed it on the first inspection. I'm not saying that inspectors are perfect. They do miss things. And if it's a safety violation and it needs to be corrected, then I'm saying we go back and we check that for free. You don't, it's no double jeopardy, you don't double ding them.
This checklist was requested by the city and we ran it by the city to be sure that we were covering bases. And it, it really nearly mirrored what Spicer Group had in place before us. So we believed that you were fully aware of the expectation and that, that this was what you wanted because you wanted to provide the landlords with an expectation and a thorough one that you could, knowing that, of course, it's not every single thing that can, can be a violation, but to give them as broad of a picture what to expect. I mean, you're imagining that developing a list like this is someone who's never rented before. He's invested in the property, he's, he or she has improved the property, they're excited to be landlord. excited to be landlords, and then something like this gives them a, a full picture of what's expected. So.
And if you look at the checklist, you'll see as you run down through it, most of them are safety issues. If there's something on the checklist that is not a safety issue, this is your checklist. You can modify it in any way possible. I would say that we would need some input. That way, if you say, well, we're going to get rid of the second one down, chimney in good repair. If you say, we don't want to make sure that the chimneys are in good report, we're going to give you feedback to tell you why that's important as a safety issue. But if you find something on the list that you don't want to enforce or you don't want looked at, then let's start the dialogue and we can certainly address that. And then you'll see that most of them are safety issues.
Right. And certainly if you are removing something from there, we would, we would like something in writing stating that you want it removed and we certainly will.
So I have two questions. For this document here, does this go out to everybody prior to an inspection? So they know what to expect?
It goes out to everybody, yes. Or it, it should be. And I know it was with Steve. I made sure that he was sending it out to everybody before the inspection. That way they don't get blindsided with what we're supposed, what we're going to be looking at.
And I think too, Councilman, it's a handout here.
Yeah.
It's a, a handout available here at City Hall as well.
I guess, like, I'm wondering when I look at this, and I haven't ever had to deal with you guys. I dealt with Spicer and then Mr. Neeson, so it sounds like things have changed a little bit. But, like, for example, the yard growth one, I guess, like, when I look at that, I guess I'm thinking that might potentially be more of a blight issue. Like, if somebody's not mowing their property, do you know what I mean? But, like, sometimes when you have a rental, everybody does theirs differently. Do you know what I mean? So, for example, if some people rent a property and they expect that the tenant's going to mow that property, well, if the tenant doesn't mow that property before you show up, it's really the landlord that's being held responsible for that when that's really more of a tenant issue that that landlord should address.
Right.
Personally, I never expected tenants to maintain the yard. But some people do that and that's accounted for in the rent. So I guess I'm just wondering how many of things, like, that to me doesn't necessarily seem like a safety issue, that might be more of a blight issue. So I'm wondering if it might be worth going back through this list.
Agree. This is the only checklist, Councilman, within any of our jurisdictions for rental inspections that includes yard growth.
And, uh, no unlicensed or inoperable vehicles parked outside of a garage? That's, that's not a safety issue.
Yeah.
Safe bill.
I guess those are the things I'm wondering because that's more, sometimes not always the landlord's issue, but the landlord's being held responsible for that. So it doesn't seem fair in that sense. Um, and maybe that's something if we're going to put this, go back through this list, I don't know if that's something worth maybe putting a committee together and getting some input on because there's people that have rental properties that I think would like to maybe have some say in that. And I, I think it's valuable to at least hear their opinions on that and people that, you know, are dealing with this process. Because, I mean, I can weigh in on, like, that I don't think is anything other than blight with the yard, but, but I don't have a rental property, so I don't know that I should be weighing in on that.
So I can give you another good example of, of conversations I've had in the past. I don't do inspections any longer. I'm the Director of Operations. But I used to do inspections for the City of Three Rivers. I did all of their rentals for ten years. And I often would get to an inspection and the landlord would say, the smoke detector's missing. I was here yesterday to do a walkthrough and that smoke detector was there. The tenant took it down. Why are you holding me responsible for that smoke detector missing? My answer to them was always, you're the property owner, you're responsible for the property. If, if the, the tenant is causing a violation that costs you money, I would recommend that you put it in your lease agreement that failed inspections due to a tenant responsibility becomes their liability for the re-inspection fee. And I had many, many landlords change their lease agreements because of that. Because they said, I'm tired of paying for a re-inspection fee for a smoke detectors that's missing, or, you know, whatever it might have been.
Right.
But the tenant did. So they changed their lease agreements to make the tenants responsible for it.
But I think maybe clarifying too, like, what you had said about, for example, the smoke detector. If somebody sent you a picture, they wouldn't necessarily be charged that fee.
Exactly.
Right. So I, I think maybe it's a combination of things, looking at what are we asking? And then what are we, what does that process look like if it doesn't pass the first time?
Sure.
I, I have a comment. Uh, on, on this one item, it says driveway and sidewalk in good condition, free of trip hazards and standing water. Now, this is a, kind of a conundrum for me because my problem is there's so many rentals in my particular part of town that they're, they're vacant a lot of time during the winter. And if they're going to be inspected, I don't know how they're going to see that if the sidewalks aren't cleared.
Right.
And that is becoming a problem on the north side because so many people love to walk and the sidewalks are not getting cleared. And it's not necessarily a financial issue as much as they're vacant. You know, they're, they're either short-term rentals and they're not being used, so nobody's bothering to clear the sidewalks. So.
And again, even a sidewalk, to me, that's a city responsibility. If you have an unsafe sidewalk that it's a trip hazard, I don't know if the property owner should be held responsible for that sidewalk. But.
Well, and I think we clarified that a little bit.
Cover it up with snow, they're not going to see it.
Exactly.
Right. So what are you proposing for the rental fees to go up?
I would propose that, and you can do whatever you want, we're, we're proposing a twenty-two-hundred-dollar flat rate administrative fee to handle all the admin processing. In order for you to recoup that, I would propose that you would do a twenty-five-dollar annual registration fee. But again, that's your decision. It's, it's not up to us to tell you how to recoup the money that, the additional money that we'd have to charge. It's just one idea.
Yep. Another idea is that you change the frequency of inspections. A three-year cycle is a long, uh, cycle. Uh, we are, we recommend, uh, at least every two.
Well, I think we talked about that a year ago. We talked about if they have a good rental, they could go three years. And if it's not, if it's consistently a problem, then they go two years.
That's what the City of Meskegan does. They reward the property owners that keep the property up and have, you know, minimum violations.
But since we're talking about options, I was just throwing, you know, that out there.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead. Based on my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, like, so if I had a rental property, had it inspected, I get a two-year certificate or three years as it stands now, I list that property to sell, that permit transfer.
The rental certificate does. The registration does not. It has to be reregistered in the new owner's name.
So if somebody else comes in, do you go back through that property? Or, because my understanding would be no at this time, right?
No, we do not.
How do other cities operate that? I guess I'm just wondering, is that typical? Do you find that it transfers?
Yeah, they, most of them require a reregistration to get the new owner's information, but they don't require a new inspection or a re, an inspection at the time of transfer of ownership.
There are some who do. If it changes ownership, they want the certificate in the new owner's name.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering, like, you know, I mean, it could have been a pristinely maintained rental property and then a year later it looks completely different. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's some ways to maybe change some of the ways we're doing it without making it be a negative impact on some of the people that are abiding by the rules and abiding by, and, and trying to make it work for all parties.
Sure.
You know?
No matter what you do with, when you change your rental program, you're always going to have negative feedback from the landlords because they don't want to pay more money to operate that business. But a rental is a business like any other business. If the cost of doing business goes up, that is always transferred to the, to the people paying the rent. And that, and that's a double-edged sword. I understand it. You don't want to increase rent prices, but as a landlord, you have to cover your costs. So no matter what the solution is, it's not going to be, uh, it's not going to sit well with the landlords. You're going to get a lot of, a lot of feedback and a lot of grief over that.
So didn't the amount of permits go up when you guys were contracted here because of what you required permits for? So technically, that's not our fault. It's you requiring permits for things that we don't require permits for.
So what I will tell, I'll speak on that. When it was the state of Michigan that was here that, before us, it was the Wild West here. There was work happening everywhere without permits. The very first year we were in here, we found just an exorbitant amount of work that requires a permit being done without permits.
And it's not to disparage the state. It's that they just don't have, the, the inspectors that they have, uh, they're assigned an, an enormous territory and they can't possibly serve it in a, in a way that is conducive to the builder who needs to keep going, you know, and the contractors that need to keep going on-site. And so they throw their hands up and keep going without inspections.
Well, some of those inspectors are required to cover six or seven counties.
Right.
You can't do that in a day. So they would have, like, one day a week would be their Meskegan, one day a week would be the next county. So you get service one day a week and a lot happens during the week that they don't see. And they're so busy going from county to county, they don't have time to follow up with the people doing work without a permit. So there was a lot of work being done without permits when the state had jurisdiction. So yes, the number of permits went up. Your tax assessor happens to absolutely love Safe Bill. You talked to Molly about us? She praises up, praises up us like crazy because she knows what's going on in the community now. She actually is able to build the taxable value, the tax base, based on the improvements being made that she actually knows about now.
And she's not inundated with knowing or finding out about improvements by her annual site visits. Uh, it's then spread over time because we provide her with monthly reports. Um, and she's able to manage it that way. And she doesn't discover it just from, in the course of her doing her own job. So.
So another topic I wanted to talk about was there's been a lot of discussion over Safe Bill requires permits for things that are not, or that are supposed to be exempt from a permit. In the building code, when you look in the administrative part of the building code, there's a list of things that permits are not required. It's easier to say what you don't need a permit for than it is to say what you do need a permit for. So Safe Bill was requiring permits for roofing. There's an entire section in the building code, in the residential code, that deals with roofing. There's code requirements for what you have to use for underlayment, how many layers you can have. Again, your licensed contractor can verify that. So if it's in the building code, it can be subject to a permit and inspections unless it's exempted by the building code in the administrative part. So the fact that Safe Bill was requiring a permit for roofing, it's because there are code requirements that need to be looked at. It requires a permit and an inspection. There are other communities, and even the state of Michigan, and Bill can attest to this, when you call the state and you ask them, do you require permits for roofs? The answer is going to be, no, they don't, because they don't have the manpower. They're already spread, spread so thin covering those territories that they have, they, they can't possibly require permits for roofs and get all the work done. They just don't have the manpower. So the comment that Safe Bill requires permits for work that doesn't require them, that's absolutely not true. We only require permits for anything that's in the building code and we have the authority and jurisdiction to do so. You all provided a clarification or an understanding of what is constituted as ordinary repairs and we've honored that list. We, we provided some feedback to the city and provided some release of liability for Safe Bill if you choose not to require a permit for that work. And we've honored that. We have no problem with that.
Okay. I have a question on the permits, like, the, the fees for the permits. So it's a fee for the permit, it's a fee for the re-inspect, it's a fee for interpretation of the work done? Am I saying that correctly?
Inspection of the work.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, like, the fees are going to add, it's not just a one.
So all the fees are paid upfront at the time of issuance of, of the permit. We calculate the fees that are due based on the work that's being done and they're all paid upfront. The only additional fees would be re-inspection fees if something is inspected and it doesn't pass and they have to go back out to look at that work again.
Okay. But I'm almost positive that I seen a permit, and I'll have to go back and look, and I'll, that I seen a permit where it had the fees and then it had a fee for interpretation of the, of the building code. There was a fee for it.
We don't have a fee for that. I know, in our system, we don't have that fee. So what you may have seen is we will do a consultation inspection. If somebody wants us to meet them on-site to look at something and discuss what needs to be done, there's a consultation fee. We, we can charge a fee for that. But interpretation, there's no interpretation fee.
Okay.
Maybe it's consultation.
Okay. I'll have to look it up. But, so are these fees, are, is this amount, is that, are you basing that just on a standard fee? Are you adding in all of those other, like, re-inspect fees and stuff like that? Are you adding that into this?
We don't add in any of the re-inspect fees until that actually occurs. If it fails, then we.
But it is in this number?
Yes. This is all fees generated for the year.
Okay. Okay. And then who is going to do the inspections now that Kevin is not here?
We, I have a resume for a gentleman that I'm going to be interviewing. Uh, we're, right now, we have a temporary replacement in the interim, but we're, we're hoping to hire somebody local. The problem with finding an inspector is you can't just pull anybody off the street and become an inspector. They have to be a registered, um, building inspector and plan reviewer through the state of Michigan. And there's requirements that have to be met in order to get that registration. It used to be Act fifty-four, now it's, uh, Act four-oh-seven. They changed the requirements in two, twenty-sixteen.
Okay.
So we have to find somebody that's registered as a building inspector and plan reviewer in the state of Michigan. And, and there's not a lot in this area, I can tell you that.
Okay.
I'm just wondering how, why, why do we end up going through so many, so many of them? What, what's going on?
We have a special situation here in Manistee. It's kind of a hybrid role of building inspector and rental inspector. Normally, those two don't mix very well because the building inspector follows the building code and it's cut and dry, you know. But when you, when you mix in rental inspections, that becomes much more difficult because you can see, you know, the list of things that they're now having to enforce. Uh, it's been challenging to get a building, a credentialed building inspector, uh, to, to do the duties of rental inspector as well. And I'm just being completely transparent. It's very difficult to find. A rental inspector doesn't need any credentials. You could hire anyone from this audience to be your rental inspector and there's no requirements needed from the state of Michigan. It's not that way with a building inspector.
So most places you have one for each?
Correct.
And I think we've also had where Kevin was splitting time between here and Meskegan. So.
Yes.
Manistee only has two days a week on-site and then down there. So there's a lot of travel involved with that position.
Even our, the, the, on one of the sheets, I listed all the inspectors, the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical, they all travel from a, a great distance. Our travel cost is enormous to get them here to the city. But we knew that going in. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's on us.
Bill, what are our options of not renewing?
So we have the renewal date, I believe, is May sixteenth. So I think we have to give thirty days' notice. Um, they were responsive when we asked them to change that ordinary repair to kind of eliminate some of those permit fees, but we'll have to look at what they're proposing in terms of increases and evaluate. So I think we'd have to figure that out pretty quickly. So you'll send that over in the next couple of days?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's going to come back to council then?
Um, and if we're going to exercise our, you know, our termination, it'd have to be, it'd have to be before Monday next week. So.
Okay. Well, to be honest, coming into this meeting, I was for not to renew. And then listening, especially the comments that you made and going off, Dave, I'm, it's, that was a big mistake, what you just said. It's, it doesn't look good. I'm kind of tired of all the years, the drama and the feedback.
We are too, trust me. We are too.
Very frustrated. And I think a lot of us are throughout the city. So.
Yeah, most of our drama and, and issues and problems and negativity all surround the rental program. We've had very little issues with the building department services. The rental program is a, is a challenge for us. It really is.
Any, adios.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gosh, I thought we were done. Okay, now we will have a discussion on the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget. Mr. Gamble and Finance Director Ed Bradford.
Okay, I'll invite Ed up. And I'll, we did get some questions from Mr. B, um, Mr. Bachman. We had, I think you asked about the marijuana money. So that was not earmarked this year. That was used to, to go into the general fund. Um, next year, we budgeted that we received two-hundred thousand. So it does seem to go down each year. It's the market, you know, there seems to be more producers, there's more. So the revenue we're getting for that is decreasing, but it has been a nice, um, amount of money to receive.
It's in the budget.
This upcoming budget's listed at two-hundred thousand.
It's in the revenue section, Dave. It's.
No, I didn't see it. Is it in there?
Should be. It's listed as marijuana tax.
It should be, but I didn't see it.
Let me check.
Right here. Tax of marijuana. Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions that I didn't have a chance to send to you. I'm, I have a question on the community development, uh, portion of it. I'm, I have a question on the community development portion of it. It's on page, page 15. You've asked for a one-time community development position that would also handle planning and zoning. Now, I've been here a while, and I remember when Denise was here, and she handled everything without staff help. And I'm thinking that currently now, all of the zoning people are located in one place. They have admin help in that building where, I'm just trying to envision how that's going to work. And I don't want to hamstring somebody by giving them this new title, a new job, without any admin help. So that's my concern with this position.
What was the reasoning before why we put it over there?
I think it was a, well, it was a five-year contract. I think it was probably a cost-saving measure, but also for coordination. We're coming to the end of that contract. Last year, it was $75,770. You know, there's various times when we've heard that, you know, that's not in the contract, those types of things, which we kind of see some additional, just control with it being in-house. I think Katie's done a great job. But it's just, I think we've had an initial quote of $100,000 to $110,000. So there's just been some, just having that in-house again, I think, could lead to other possibilities about going after MISTHA funding, maybe growing a department, maybe having rental under a community development department. So there's just, it leads to more possibilities. We've also talked about with the deputy treasurer position, maybe taking some of, like, accounts payable from Heather, and then also her helping out a little bit more with the use permits and some of that, that tracking and record-keeping. So we're just kind of, I think the key is, though, getting someone in place and then kind of building around that person, maybe having some grants to supplement some other staff there too, but...
So what's the downside of not moving Katie? Like, is there a downside of not?
Downside of not moving?
Yeah.
So we have to either redo it, we have to renegotiate a new contract with, with the county for this. But I think that's the thing. It's going to be about the same amount of money. Well, we saw this last year, and I'll just give you an example. We were under the understanding that we'd have a full-time dedicated person. Obviously, they had some, I think they had someone going out on maternity leave, so then Katie was kind of spread around. So as much as you say, yeah, there's some backups there, you also see some issues where, when they have a staffing shortage, you'll see some of the resource get spread around a little bit. So I do think that the more a person is in place, they get used to the ordinances, they're getting used to our processes. I think we're going to see some efficiencies there. But there always is a risk with any change, but at the same time, I think, kind of having this set up now, the contract doesn't end until October 30th, so we'd have some time to look for a person. And depending on the skill set we have, we can kind of look at what gaps we need to fill too. So I think it's important that we put this in the budget to consider. It's, I think, you know, if we're not going to bring it in-house, it's just, it's something that we've been talking about for the last, at least as long as I've been here. How many, how many people have we had in that position over the course of this contract?
Kyle Story, we've had Jeff, help.
Zach.
Zach. No, Katie. That's the third person.
Again, I'm going back to the nightmare of Denise. And I really liked Denise, and she worked very hard, but she worked without a lot of support. So if there's a way that we can just subcontract that admin portion that I think they use and they share in the planning and zoning department, I think that would, and they could still dedicate themselves to the city. But honestly, I think it's still a good fit there. It could be, it could be renegotiated. I just don't want to hamstring anybody. They need help with paperwork and everything else, so it's, it's a burden.
And that's been the discussion. I appreciate that. We were talking about maybe some of that initial intake maybe being something that stays with the county. We've talked about that a little bit, so I think we're, we're going to talk about that some more as well.
I guess piggybacking on that, though, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned bringing that in-house and then looking for grants to supplement the need. It seems like we would have looked at potential grants and that funding before we decide to bring it in-house and then figure out how are we going to get the financing to put those people in place. So that's a little concerning that we want to jump to bringing it back in-house and then figure out how we're going to make that work.
So if I might, Bill, the budget fully funds a position, and depending on who we get, it might even have a little bit of extra money. When Denise was here after John Rose retired, she did everything that the county is doing now and then some with no difficulties. So to say that a person coming in is going to need all this administrative help, we're going to provide that through a variety of different ways. We, Bill mentioned restructuring a little bit downstairs in the clerk and treasurer's department. Some, some of the city manager's office possibly can do some of that, and spreading some of that around a little bit to, again, make sure that the person in this position is set up for success. But I think it's, it's not accurate to say that Denise was struggling with that. But Denise was a unique individual. She had a great skill set. She had 25 years with the city. She understood the ordinances like the back of her hand. So there will be a learning curve with whoever we bring into this position if it goes that direction. But I don't think that the administration's going to let that position fail for lack of administrative support.
Well, that's my concern. I don't want that position to fail because we need it. It's vital to our success here in the city. So I'm, I'm just bringing it up because I don't want, we needed to have this discussion, so.
Sorry. So I'm looking at what we're proposing here, and it looks like they want to jump up to $100,000 or $110,000 annually, right? What does that give us? That gives us Katie in what? Their whole department, or like, who else is involved in that figure?
So I think you have some, some backup with Mike being involved, but I think kind of they're listing all these things not included in the contract, like attending staff meetings. So it's just, it just seems like when it's in-house, it's kind of like you have busy times and you have slow times, and you have staff that accepts that it's a busy time. When it's contracted out, you just always have that debate about it's not in the contract, and so...
Because it looks like it's about the same amount of money, and we're talking about one person here in-house versus a department already versed in the zoning and planning stuff, right? Do we have somebody we're thinking of? I just don't know if, I don't know if that person's out there right now.
So, no, we'd have to advertise, and we'd have to see who applies. That's probably, we have qualifications we put by it.
So if we severed our contract, would Katie's job be eliminated at the county?
I talked to, no, they said it would not.
They would just absorb her at $100,000 or absorb that into their staff?
I'm not sure about their inner workings with that, but yeah, it's, they said they would not. Of course, she'd be free to apply for it if she wanted to, but...
Have we had discussions with them about potential contract changes that might be beneficial to both parties and found that to be not an option?
We've had some discussions with them, and that's where that number came from, and we can continue talking to them about it. But that's where that idea about having some, more of an admin support role at the county came up.
So could we get a little bit more information on this? I guess I feel like personally, from my perspective, seeing this in the budget, not getting any information beforehand, and being given this budget in such a short timeframe when you want us to approve it, because I think this has to be approved the first week in May, so we're talking less than a month. I feel blindsided by this. There should have been a little bit more information to us as a council on potentially what the concerns were, what's been discussed, and what are we envisioning? Because I think probably all seven of us have a different envision on this, and I bet everybody at the admin level has a different vision too.
I can send you more information.
I'd appreciate that.
Well, I, I might did the same thing because of, when they jumped ahead of me. But I think we need to bring it back in-house. For that kind of money, we can pay whoever we hire. And I don't think you can handle it, Bill, because you got enough. We're talking to you every week. So, you know, we'd have to have whoever's going to handle it.
Jim, I didn't understand. Do you think we should bring it in-house or not bring it in-house? Do you think we should bring it in?
I don't know where to go. My opinion stays the same. I think we bring a person in-house that's just dedicated to our zoning and planning, et cetera. But sharing administrative services with some support staff, I think, is vital to success.
If I may, I'm, I would welcome having it back in-house. I miss that, working with a planning and zoning here. It's just, it's nice to be able to bounce those ideas, to be able to, you know, run upstairs when you need something or have them come down. It's, it's nice to have that person here that you're able to work with when we have projects come up, when there's, you know, something with the ordinance, anything like that that comes up. It's just, it's nice to have that here. I mean, Katie's been great to work with, but it is, it is nice to have it here. And also for me, as the clerk with document retention, I like having that stuff here to know that everything is, is here and, you know, being maintained here at City Hall is...
You don't have to keep calling the county to schedule an appointment to document.
Yeah, it's nice to have it here. But again, Katie is doing a great job.
I know, but I look back on those days and look at all the paperwork and all the many hours that she spent, and she looked exhausted all the time. And I just know in person, conversations with her, it was just very wearing not to have support. So that is going to be my complaint about it. My only, and that's my only complaint. I don't want to hamstring somebody coming into a big job like that where they're handling it all.
And we would not let that happen here, though. I hope not.
Are we going in, I don't know what we're doing. Are we going in order with, like, questions, or are we just, you have a...
I just, I saw Councilwoman Lundberg sent some questions. I didn't get a chance. It was right before the meeting, but I guess whoever...
Well, I have a question on the, on the DDA contract. Like, I don't know where we're at with that. I mean, what are the, what are the cons of them not ex, in the contract?
So being on the DDA board, I think there was, they wanted to see more money go towards certain physical improvements, also the, I believe it was the facade program. But we do have a contract with them. It does say 180 days' notice before June 30th. There's a prior notice. If they're going to terminate the contract, they did not provide it with, they would have had to do that January 1st. So at this point, I think they passed two different budgets where I think they're, we're going to be talking about what that looks like. But there's, I think, Ed, you can give them some of the history on...
The budget that they submitted did not have the $70,000. So they might have thought about having to, but the one they submitted had zeroed that line item out.
Okay, so they're not going to pay that?
Well, I guess just a little background. That's their proposed budget. They, I think they did that to foster a conversation, but ultimately, council has to approve their budget. And we have a contract with the DDA that says you need to give 180 days' notice to get out of that contract unless both parties agree. So the city could agree to have some more conversation and change that, but it does modify the city's budget because we included the revenue that we expected from that contract in the, in our budget. So they excluded it, we included it in ours.
Okay. Okay, and then I just got a question about the, the money for the volunteer fund. I feel like that needs to specify what it is actually for because we have an NRBC committee that is actually volunteers, like, we get volunteers to do these projects, so I would like it to say, you know, they're, they're able to use those funds.
So I think the budget in front of you has $12,500 under the DPW parks. I think we'd like to have any volunteer support go through a department head, so Chief Glass is the, the department head for NRBC. So perhaps splitting some of that funds between the police department budget and then keeping some with the parks. I think that could be a way to do that.
Okay.
Let me back up a minute for the DDA. So, Ed, you mentioned that our budget included this money and their budget doesn't include that money? Have we had a discussion? Because it seems like there's two opposite ends, and somehow we got to figure a middle ground.
Yeah, I mean, I'd let the city manager address that since he's on the DDA board.
So we've had some preliminary. We need to sit down and talk more about it.
So I guess, I'm confused because of this, but our budget includes that money, and that's not where it's going to end up, then the budget's going to look different than what you're asking us to approve.
We can't approve it until you guys figure that out.
I don't think that's the case at all. A budget's only as good as the day the ink dries on it. Assumptions change constantly. This, this, we had prepared our budget based on a contract that was valid and binding because they didn't give us 180 days' notice. The fact that the DDA excluded that from the, from their budget came out of the blue. That was a surprise to me. And it was too late to change that in our budget. We'd already gotten 95% of the way through the process, plus the contract is on our side. City council decides that they want to talk to the DDA and reduce that amount or zero it out, it just means that we have $70,000 left to work with in the budget, but there's always variances in the budget. We have ample fund balance, and we'd sort it out. So I don't think it precludes, you know, passing a budget at all. If there's, there's conversations between now and when the budget's passed and we reduce it, you just adopt it with a deficit budget or you find some other cuts if that's the council's preference.
Well, I guess my concern is it'd be nice to have an accurate number, or at least know what that discussion looks like. And I guess I'm, maybe I'm reading more into this, but I don't really know. Like, the DDA is part of our community, so I don't know why we're not having that discussion because essentially it was, you just said to us, "The contract's in our favor." I don't know that we want to strong-arm the DDA into this is what we're expecting when there could be a collaborative effort and find a middle ground.
Councilmember, perhaps, maybe if I, you'd indulge me on a little history lesson of this DDA contract. And we have Karen here that can speak as well. But the, the city DDA maintenance contract has been an issue for a long time. And it, it went through many, many different iterations, different perspectives. We want a very detailed contract. We don't want a contract. We want to pay a contractor. All that contractor's too much. There's been a lot of discussion. It goes all the way back to previous city manager Mitch Deish and community development director John Rose. The DDA and the city sat down in good faith and probably about over a nine-month period negotiated the existing contract, which is only two or three years old. And both sides had a great conversation. We gave, I think neither side was totally satisfied with the contract, but that means it's probably a pretty fair contract. And so it's surprising to me that all of a sudden, as members on the DDA board change, now this contract is one-sided and doesn't work because it was negotiated in good faith with a reasonable escalator contract clause in it. I'm, I'm very surprised that this particular contract is, is being looked at as being a problem now. From, from the finance director's perspective, you're absolutely right. The city and the DDA need to be on the same page. We all want the same thing.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the history lesson on that, but I guess my concern is, we've talked several times this past winter when snow plowing and things like that came up, and we were told they were paying for that. That's why they got the treatment they did, or that's why they got the preference that they did. I guess I'm wondering, what is the city's response of? I guess my thought is, when you build the budget, I get there's financial parts to that, but there's also human characteristics to that, and there's job duties. So if you're anticipating that they're not going to pay for that, has there been discussion on what that's going to look like? What's the services going to be reduced by? And what are we, what are we, why are we not being informed of that? If, because I guess I'd like to know best-case scenario, worst-case scenario. You're telling me best-case scenario, they're going to give us the $65,000 that you said they've agreed to or the contract states. They're not accounting for that. So what does that look like?
I don't want to speak for the city manager. That's a council policy decision. If council says, "We want to let the DDA not pay any money for those enhanced services and put that towards facade grants and the other things that they had indicated in their budget", the city would just have to absorb that. What would that mean down the road? It's hard to say. When this contract went into effect, I know Jeff added some seasonal help for the, for the DDA. So this is, you know, the city workforce is a fixed cost. So if we're not getting reimbursed for some of that, you know, without having the discussion with the DDA and knowing what that looks like and having internal discussions to say, "Hey, you've got $30,000 less to work with", I think it's impossible for us to sit up here and say, "What is that going to mean?" The reality is those services could all be done, and it just puts pressure on other parts of the budget.
Right, but I guess as a council, I'm going to speak for myself only on this, but as a council member, this is part number two I feel a little blindsided at on the last quarter where there could have been discussion, and we've already had discussion. We're on two opposite ends, and this is what we're thinking. This is what they've talked about. I guess it just seems like some, some information is missing there.
So this is, we're going to be talking with them more, and I think there, there's been kind of discussions. I, I didn't think they were going to zero out the contract either as a DDA board member. So I think we're hoping to have some discussions whether we can meet in the middle or what that means in terms of services. As you mentioned, we have a, we have an ordinance that they're supposed to clean their sidewalks of snow. We've been not doing that because they've been paying the extra money. But then you have the issue... not doing that because they've been paying the extra money. But then you have the issue of the snow on River Street. Where is it all going to go? I mean, it, that's kind of a big part of DPW's operation. And every snowfall is getting it out of that, that area because you can't just put it on the sidewalks and the, the street, obviously. So, but there's banners, there's planner boxes, there's all sorts of items. We, we do downtown and enhance services of the bathrooms. So I think some board members feel that should be just part of city services. So this does turn into, you know, as a city council, myself, how are we going to address these things? So.
So bathrooms downtown are part of the DDA?
So they own those bathrooms on, by Goody's. And so there's enhanced, there's more cleaning there. And Jeff, I don't know if you could talk about that a little bit?
Well, the, the two bathrooms that are downtown are next to Goody's or what was Goody's. And then at the Marina Building, the DDA contributed most if not all the funds to construct those. The only difference really between what we do to those versus the other 13 restroom facilities in the community is we heat them during the winter, we keep them open during the winter, and we clean them all through the winter. All the rest of the facilities after Memorial Day through Labor Day get cleaned seven days a week. But there's a little bit extra during the winter time downtown.
Thank you.
So I had a question about Housing North. I know we've been funding them. Have we got anything back to that, like anything?
So they do have their work plan. I, I asked actually Trace to send that to me, an updated one. I'll send that to council. The NACs are working that NAC presentation today. So they're looking to implement those, you know, housing action plan items. But I can give you kind of what the, what the plan is for that and show you kind of what the roadmap is for short and long-term goals.
Because this is what, the third year that we've been giving them?
No, we just started this last budget. So this is the first year.
I haven't really seen anything tangible coming out of this.
I have the same question.
I'm a little hesitant on funding it again when there hasn't been anything.
We did have a three-year contract, I believe, funding.
And then I just had a question for the fire department. Are we still using the police for backup? We used to do like a dual training or do we still do that?
Currently, we, initially we had four cross-trained firemen that were policemen initially, overall. We've gone down to two at this point. Most of it was just keeping certification, training, participating. We're currently at two that are dedicated that are going to continue to do that. And we have one that is EMT trained that crosses over and helps on occasion.
Who's EMT trained?
Steve. Sergeant Schmeling is EMT.
Was it Franco or Halyud?
No, none of the others are currently.
Are they firefighters then?
Yes. So currently Franco is a firefighter and Halyud.
So Steve is down.
Steve is, Steve is backing out and as well as Officer Cook. It's just due to levels of training and being involved.
Why don't we encourage that anymore? Wouldn't that have helped us a little bit in backing up the?
It can on the fireside. Where we've been focusing a lot more is on medical. And so having medical training, there's, the plan that's, or the system that's been in place, we don't usually have Officer Schmeling or Sergeant Schmeling take that as a primary role. He ends up being a driver for us and that's a licensure requirement is to having an EMT and a paramedic with a paramedic in the back.
I think on the fireside too, a change, didn't it, when you made automated mutual contracts?
That did, that did change a lot.
Fire management, so you automatically get other firefighters, you get first dispatched to San Francisco Fire Department. So kind of lessen that need for police officers. We didn't have that before.
Okay. Well, we can't, we, there's nothing that we can do to help.
Well, that's not saying we can't do that at all. I'm just.
And also there's, they have to be, my, one of my standards is they have to be involved, dedicated, coming to training. And that's part of it.
They're not doing that?
Not to the level that they were in the past. Now, these two gentlemen, these two guys have been and they're fulfilling all their training requirements and meeting those expectations. So.
I'm just trying to figure out other options of having to hire more when we could utilize what we have. If we can get more trained.
Because you come into a contract and he's contracting.
It's not part of the contract?
And that is, that is a possibility. We're talking on fireside. So there's two aspects here. Where we're hurting the most and as well as the entire county is in EMS side. And that, we only have one crossover officer for that. Can we send that to others to that? Yeah, that's a possibility. However, they need to be able to do, follow and keep up the criteria curriculum, all their CE credits and stuff of that nature. And if they can follow through that, that wouldn't be as much of an issue. But at the same time, you got to remember, you have so many policemen and you have so many firemen. And if it's a traffic accident, somebody's there controlling traffic, somebody's controlling, they may take off, it may be domestic, they have to stay on scene with that. Or that extra person we could use with a truck and or on an ambulance transfer, you're just taking them from one place and putting them in another spot. So I think that's, that's part of that issue as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if they could do the call back, like if you're out France or whatever, or whatever, if they could backfill.
Well, you don't go to another county.
What's that?
You don't go to another county.
If you're.
With our ambulance?
No.
Potentially we do. If we have to transfer a patient to Luddington. So many OB patients will be transferred to Luddington because it's the closest appropriate facility. So yeah, we do travel to Mason County, which is closer than running to Cadillac or to Traverse City.
But you go to Traverse City too, though?
On occasion, on occasion. It's a lot more rare today where some of our STEMIs protocols have changed where we go directly to months in Manistee and then usually NMR or another transporting agency picks them up and takes them from there. So.
I know we talked about that with the ambulance going out, or into counties.
That totally comes back to a staffing issue, not just solely to us, but to the county as well. And it's a statewide issue that's ongoing.
I think there's going to be a lot of discussion with the new fire chief on EMS and EMTs and port and going outside the city that are going to have to have. I mean, we can't just ignore this issue. We need to have this discussion with the new chief. We, Mark's leaving in a couple of weeks, so probably not the right guy today, huh?
Yeah. Hopefully he'll have some fresh ideas and there's only so many people out there doing the job. That's what it comes down to. So my, my, my philosophy is I want him on our side and working with us. That's the approach I've been taking. I, I feel that we need to be self-sufficient more than what we are today. So that was my reasoning and backing. So.
I thought your logic for the paramedic and the new firefighter was solid. It wasn't what I was expecting in the budget. I expected based on last conference, it had to be something different. You wanted to, to help service the out county. There's no way in the world I was going to support that. What stuff you wrote here, I can support what you wrote here because it makes sense. It's not to supplement the county. So it's to take care of your own and I can support that.
And my intention's not to supplement the county. It's more so that to have a three-man staff shift so that there's always somebody back and available. There's a caveat to that because every time an ambulance or every time a crew goes out, currently we have two minimum staff, two are on shift. When they go out, the station's empty. And the reason for the, asking for the two initially was so that each shift had somebody back so that in another event, they could at least get care started or something along that nature.
We don't want to get in a situation where you always got three and the captain never goes out either.
Yeah. No, all three. And currently when we do have a three-man shift, all three do go out. And sometimes I'm out with them. It's just.
I understand. But if, you can see a situation and boy, well, we got a captain and two firefighter paramedics. Call goes, okay, guys, see you later. And the captain never goes out. You couldn't allow that to happen.
No.
At least we wouldn't allow you to let that happen. They have to all stay in rotation. They have to all take calls.
And that's usually how they work through. They cycle through, each paramedic takes a patient and then they rotate off and it gives them a break as well where not one person is constantly taking every call in a 48-hour period.
I understand. I'm just voicing that out loud.
It was sitting at eight people. Are we down because they're going to be gone and a new chief come in? But are we down one fireman too?
Yeah. When I moved up into the chief's position, that left one slot that was left open as a person. And I still, it's different for me today. I am very active on the fire ground and in the medical field. So I respond to many of the calls. So that's not really a normal model that you see. It's just unique to this area and it's a thing I believed in. So.
Are we down at seven then?
Currently, right now, we are, we have six shift workers. So we're down at minimum, as minimum staff as we can have. We had one firefighter, paramedic leave and go to another fire station. That happened here about one, well, end of, in, in March.
Are we advertising?
Yes, we've been advertising. We have two candidates. Both of them are out of, out of our jurisdiction. One of them is a firefighter in school to be a paramedic. He'll be completing it in October. He's paramedic. And didn't, I didn't get into details of asking about moving, but he's one candidate that's out there that is probably, is the qualified applicant. He does have a contract, I believe, with Life EMS. So there's, there's caveat to that too, as far as there, everybody's going to the same model of having you require you to work three years or you pay back that fee because it's, because there's not that many paramedics out there. We're promoting and we're sponsoring these people to go and educate them. And sometimes you get, if you don't have something in place, you get caught in it, you know, and get burned on it. So the second one is a paramedic that's an IC. He's not a firefighter. So there's the other school of thought that it would be cheaper for us to send a firefighter or a person who can get their fire training and have a shorter time. They'd be back at the station more. So there are two applicants and both of those are out of our 20-mile jurisdiction of residency. So that's kind of in limbo right now. We've only had two applicants for the past month. And it's, it's, it's a tight field out there. So.
I have one more thing. Sorry. Okay. The state constitution, Article 12, Section 3. Do you know that every 16 years there, they have in this particular part of the constitution, the whole state legislature has a chance to review our constitution for the state? Now, when you think about that, when you, when you think about constitutional revenue, which is where we get the majority of our street funding from, which comes from vehicle registrations and motor fuel sales, and you think about the other thing that's going on in the background with the drum pounding that by 2030, 60% of our passenger vehicles are going to be electric. They're going to have to figure out how to at least keep our revenue to a steady, if not increase it. I just think as a city, the more that we can talk to Kurt Vanderwal, to Mr. Bumstead and all of our representatives, how important it is for our city to have that funding and that we are, would support actions for them to take to protect additional revenue sharing to our, to all of the cities. There's 531 cities and villages in the state of Michigan. 39% of the revenue goes to state truck line fund and 39.1% goes to the 83 county road commissions and their systems. And 21.8% is going to the 532 cities and villages. And a lot of that is based on population. So you know where most of that's going to end up. It's not going to end up in a city our size. So we need to really fight for that. And I think we should make some noise about it. So that's my thought on the, that's all I have left to talk about tonight. Anything for Chief?
Anything else for me?
No, thank you. Nope. Anybody else for right now?
Yeah, I want to.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Ed, in your budget for the police, fire and city garage, we have a motor pool of 55,000 in 2022 and it goes up to 58, 61, going by 2024. Fire department goes from 84,000 to 88 up to 92. And the city garage is 97,000 to 207. Where does all this money go to?
So Councilmember Grabowski, the, the numbers for motor pool that you see in the general fund departments that have equipment as, as well as the water and sewer utility, that money is rent payments to the motor pool. And the motor pool then buys the equipment. And the plan that we laid out over 10 years in order to make that sustainable raises those rents 5% a year. So every department pays, that has a motor pool contribution pays 5% more. You might recall, we sent over $300,000 from the general fund to the motor pool over a three-year period to help stabilize it because the costs for equipment have escalated faster than the rents were coming in. And we had laid out a plan to do that right around 2008 when the Great Recession hit. Yeah. So there was a number of years that we weren't able to raise rents from the general fund or the water and sewer utility to the motor pool because the budget wouldn't support it. So it's one of the things that put additional stress onto the motor pool. But that's what those are, rental payments. And they are increased by an inflationary rate every year.
Rental payments. What are you renting?
Well, they're called rental. It's, it's a contribution from the, from the general fund on a departmental basis to the motor pool to pay for the equipment that the motor pool buys.
And then you come to us and ask for us money to buy your piece of equipment?
That's paid for out of the motor pool fund. So that's designed how it works. The motor, the motor pool by ordinance pays for that equipment.
Why don't we just keep it in the budget? Then we don't need to transfer it over to the motor pool.
You could. It works well. It's manageable that way, but that's certainly council's prerogative through an ordinance amendment if they wanted to get rid of the motor pool. That was funded when they sold the Dune subdivision before I worked for the city because the fleet was in such horrific condition apparently back at that time. And that influx of money helped to modernize the fleet. And the motor pool was a mechanism which is very common across cities throughout the state to help to manage those expenses and make sure that you can keep your fleet in good working order. It's just a mechanism to help manage that.
Now, under the public works, I see what they pay utilities, 16,000. It stays pretty even, natural gas. The Parks Department pays 24,000. Do they have a separate meter for each one of these departments?
There's no free water in the city of Manistee. So every park that has water usage, we meter it. And the Parks Department pays for that. We pay for the irrigation. We pay for all the water in the restrooms, everything. Even City Hall is metered and City Hall pays for their water. And I, I could explain it better, but I, I believe that's based on the bond covenants and, and the water and sewer being an enterprise fund.
But what the electricity? You just got one, you have one meter for the city garage?
Yes. And that gets.
All this because, you know, you're paying out for the, for the one department, Public Works. You're paying out 16,000. And the Parks is paying out 24,000. How do you come to estimates of one meter?
Heather, how many electric bills do we get a month?
I was just figuring out.
Thirty?
No, we have like 60, 60 or 62, right around there. 60, 62 that I pay.
So every, and think about this, in every park where we have electricity and lights, we get a bill for that. We also get billed for all the streetlights, the treatment plant, the water wells. At the city garage, there's one meter, like you suggested. And then we proportionally split that between the utility departments that use the garage as well as the parks and the street department.
Does the DDA pay for the lights on there on River Street?
No.
In the district?
No.
No? Oh. Might remind you of that.
Yeah. All, all of the, all the electricity in the community that's on public, public property is metered and we're paid for. A lot of the streetlights aren't metered, but we pay a per fixture charge.
Okay.
And that's why we've also tried to promote, when you see a street light out, it's very easy to go to the consumer's outage website. You can, the maps are getting even better. But if you click on that, it notifies consumers that the street light's out. When they replace that street light, they replace it with an LED and they actually reduce our, our electric consumption charges each time that happens.
Okay. How come alternative for area use, it's 13,000. Well, that's in our budget, 13,000. You have the pool 40,000. That's in our budget. How come it's in the Parks Department budget?
So Councilmember Grabowski, the state had. So Councilmember Grubowski, the state has a mandated accounting manual and chart of accounts for your general ledger that they've spent years and years and years updating. And so to be in compliance from an accounting standpoint, they're not, you're not allowed to have what's called an appropriations department. So we moved the appropriations for each of those organizations into the department that made most sense. So AAY and the Payne Pool are kind of a recreational thing, so we moved those into the Parks and Recreation Department. So we had to comply with the state chart of accounts.
Okay, anybody else for right now? Uh, oh, sorry. I forgot where we're at. Okay, Mr. Gamble.
So we'll work to get those questions answered and documents and then we'll, I appreciate everyone's questions. And if you have any more, please send them to myself and we'll continue discussion next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, staff, department head? No? Mr. Pratt? Can we get an update at some point in regards to the trim for view policy that was being discussed between you and?
Yep, so we have a draft right now. I sent it to the tree commission, they wanted to discuss it at their next meeting. I believe, when is it, the 17th?
Next Monday.
It's Monday. So I think I've been kind of just working with the tree commission on this and I wanna support them on this. It's not, I think, it came from them, I wanna work with them on this. This isn't a city manager in a silo working on this, so they're coming back with some more information or they're gonna do another review.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Grubowski? Spotting. Mr. Brockman?
Just got one. Jeff, I sent the city man email, you can disregard it. Got nice out, a lot of bags are out. What should the citizens expect in return for those bags that are sitting on the curb?
Yeah, so the program begins in May each year and I've gone back and verified that. So we've put the ads out for that. One of the big opportunities for, for my department, especially the street department, is I have the six bridge tenders still in-house and they don't go back to the bridges till May 1st. So typically this month, we are trying to do all the big, heavy bulk items like taking the fences down on the beaches, leveling the sand, you know, we've been out patching up the scars that the plows have made. However, I have told the city manager and we've told residents when they're calling in that there's, with the warm weather right now, there's a lot of bags coming out, we're gonna start sending out a crew at least once a week probably this, this month.
Okay.
And it's more of, make sure it's not slightly, unsightly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Sweet.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I have nothing, so I'll take motion to adjourn. I'll make motion.